I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise to the implication and to pledge allegiance from the Honorable Mr. Brad Childs.
Father, Creator of the universe, Architect of our earth, we humbly pray to you to protect us from the unpredictable elements during the hurricane season and bless us with favorable weather. Help us to remain safe in your shelter. We are grateful for all you have done for Orange during past times of wind and rain. The resiliency you have created in our community is truly a miracle. Please place your loving hand on each staff member as they diligently prepare for the season. Lord, with a humble, Lord with humble and graceful heart, we offer you thanks for the gift of faith we have in you. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as those of the lives of those being counted out for it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Childs. We'll move to item three. I need a motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as or agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments can be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department per prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name that I have on my list is Ms. Linda Patillo. Please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm taking three minutes to get up here.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna.
My name is Linda Patillo. I live at 907 Collins Street here in Orange. And my comment is on the current late fee on the city water and similar. And the problem is, as I said, Ms. McKenna, with my concerns, is that this late fee, there's no grace period. In other words, if it's due on the seventh and you pay on the eighth, you still owe to pay $10. It discriminates against those of us who are senior citizens or disabled. Again, monthly starting from the government, from the federal government. Because the federal government does not pay on the same date each month. They pay on, according to your birthday. So in other words, my birthday is the first part of the month. So what they do is, I don't get paid till the second Wednesday. Now, so that means I never get paid before the eighth, and sometimes it's as late as the fourteenth. Now, the other, I don't know about other senior citizens, I do know several that have the same, you know, as I do, don't get paid till the second Wednesday. So that means we end up being late every month. Now, some say we'll pay it the month before. Well, I figured it out, and right now, I'm paying 4% of my total income each month for my water bill. If I were to pay two months, you know, pay two months, pay a month ahead, I'd be paying 8%. And that's just not possible when you don't have a fixed income. Someone who's suggested credit cards, well, that's fine. Except, they still charge, the city still charges $5 each credit card. And then when you figure in the interest, you're paying the $10. So that's no help at all. Also, for those of us who don't have a large water bill, which I don't, at this moment, I'm looking by myself. Okay, the total of the late fee is more than 10% of the bill. So that seems very discriminatory and very out of balance. And what I would ask for is at least a five-day grace period. At least some kind, so that those of us who don't get paid till, say, one month, it's the fourteenth, aren't paying, well, you figured out, we're paying at least $100 a year for absolutely nothing for late fee. And if they would give us a grace period, also, I don't know those of you who realize, the water bill doesn't come the same day each month. Sometimes it's the fourth, sometimes it's the eighth, sometimes the tenth, sometimes the fifth. So we can't even plan if we know it's not going, you know, that we're not going to get paid before it's due. So what I would ask is a grace period, at least for those of us who are senior citizens on a fixed income or those with disabilities who are getting federal funds. Because this is really, I mean, you think $10, that's not much, but there's some months when $10 is more than a lot, when you're not getting any of the income and have medical bills and things like that. So I would ask that they at least give us a five-day grace period. So before charging an exorbitant amount that they're charging. So that would come, I would appreciate you having that consideration for us, those of us who struggle each month just to make the water bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come before the council?
My name is Allen Meister, under 704 Tenth Street. And I'd like to address what this woman just spoke about, the water bill tax, the same thing. Now, let's go on. I said give them about a two-week period. If you're on the first, you gotta have to pay about 15 before you occur a late fee. Now, here in Orange, one day, you gotta pay. I have tenants who, you know, they're bad families, they have big water bill. I think they need a little break. They work, they get some social services, some work at the plants, some have their own business. And I don't know any other place that you don't get a grace period of some sort, and I get taxed on that tax. That's why.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? If not, who posted as a comment? Move to city announcement from city staff, Ms. Williams.
Mayor, council, and our guests, the CDP Department is excited to announce the upcoming July Fourth concert and fireworks show. The event will take place on Thursday, July Fourth, at Riverside Pavilion. Gates open at 4:00 p.m. Lot of music by the Royal News Band from 7:00 to 9:00, and a dazzling fireworks display set to begin at 9:00 p.m. A little information about the band, they offer genres ranging from country, classic rock, Motown music, and more. So we look forward to celebrating the adoption of the Declaration of Independence on July Fourth, 1776, marking America's birth as a nation. Thank you.
Did he say dazzling fireworks?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, I see we have some competition across the little bridge this year. So we need those fireworks to be extra, extra special.
Extra dazzling.
Yeah. Ritten City is doing a drum show on Saturday, not on July Fourth. That's right. That's probably the main one. Make fun of him, yeah. No, Mr. Bradley.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. I'm excited to announce we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for the next couple of weeks that our business is carried by the city of Orange. This week, on June 27th at 4:00 p.m., Rising Grand Vals Orthodontic Specialist that is located in the hospital at Equal Point will have a ribbon cutting, that's again, June 27th at 4:00 p.m. And then on July 9th, Whitewater Express Car Watch will have their ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. We have consented agenda, June 11th, 2024. Regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Yes.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Okay, and I say aye as well. On to item seven, ordinances. Considering ordinance of the city council of Orange, Texas, amending the Orange Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 12.1000, sign regulations in its entirety, repealing all ordinances and conflict with ordinance, providing insuburbility clause, establishing an effective date, providing penalty clause, and other matters. First reading was June 11th, 2024. Mr. Knopf. Okay, any questions or comments from Mr. Knopf?
I'd like to make a comment. I've known Mr. Knopf probably for six, seven years now, and he has worked diligently on this project. So I know it's done since he, I'd like to make a motion.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. On to item seven B. Considering ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, amending the City of Orange Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Planning and Zoning, Section 12.502, definitions by adding a definition for electronic smoking device, amending Chapter 12, Planning and Zoning, Section 12.608, main use matrix by prohibiting standard industrial classification code 5993, tobacco establishments and stands in any zoning district, prohibiting establishments predominantly selling electronic smoking devices commonly called vape shops in any zoning district, and including the sale of electronic smoking devices in standard industrial classification code 5993, amending ordinance 2016-15 by prohibiting standard industrial classification code 5993, tobacco establishments and stands, and prohibiting establishments predominantly selling electronic smoking devices commonly called vape shops in the MUZD mixed-use zoning district, amending ordinance 2022-14 by prohibiting standard industrial classification code 5993, tobacco establishments and stands, and prohibiting establishments predominantly selling electronic smoking devices commonly called vape shops in the MUZD mixed-use zoning district, amending ordinance 2022-15 by prohibiting standard industrial classification code 5993, tobacco establishments and stands, and prohibiting establishments predominantly selling electronic smoking devices commonly called vape shops in the MUZD mixed-use zoning district, amending ordinances 2023-20 by prohibiting standard industrial classification code 5993, tobacco establishments and stands, and prohibiting establishments predominantly selling electronic smoking devices commonly called vape shops in the MUZD mixed-use zoning district, providing that tobacco establishments and stands and establishments that predominantly selling electronic smoking devices commonly called vape shops in operation on the date of final passage of this ordinance and publication as required by the Orange City Charter and Texas law are hereby declared to be legally nonconforming and must comply with the City of Orange Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Planning and Zoning, Section 12.306, application of, and compliance with the zoning ordinance, finding that this ordinance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance and master plan of the city of Orange, and promotes the public health, safety, and welfare, providing insuburbility clause, repealing all ordinances and conflict with this ordinance, providing a penalty clause, providing an effective date, and other matters. First reading was June 11th, 2024. Mr. Knopf.
For planning and zoning, permission by the ladies of the table.
Okay, I'm too tired for questions. I'm gonna add a motion. Motion and a second. Yeah, I see you again. Here we go. Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. And I wish to honor, once again, publicly honor, Mr. Knopf and his, your staff, because this is an issue we've been playing with, with vape shops. We've asked several months ago to help us find a way to thwart the new development of vape shops in the city of Orange, and you have done that. So thank you, sir. We commend you. I've already spoken with several school superintendents to make them aware, and they were like, wow. And hopefully other cities will follow suit. We're not getting rid of what we currently have, we're just making sure we're not fixing to be overrun with anymore. So, thank you, sir. Okay, on to item A, considering resolution approving an EDC infrastructure agreement with the next corps at Christus Hospital, Orange, 6901 Main Center Drive, Orange, Texas, 77630, and an amount not to exceed 50,000. Ms. Hillary Bradley.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. That March 1st board came to the EDC and asked for assistance in adding a canopy to the current hospital that would provide some cover for some tacking precautions leading into the medical offices side of the building. So this was currently brought back in March, but we have met a 16-day waiting period. So we bring this back to you for the motion.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Bradley? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Item A B, consider a resolution authorizing the city's participation in acceptance of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Award, $312,471, for the Community Development Block Grant Year 2023, federal funding, and establishing an effective date. Ms. Monson.
Yes, this is the grant that y'all approved for the public services, and this is the entitled, the entire grant for our 2024.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Weir, our recuse, John.
We have a refusal. Ms. McKenna, any other questions or comments? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion to say? Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Ms. Monson. Thank you, Ms. McKenna. On to item A, city, considering a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for disaster recovery monitoring services with Tetra Tech Incorporated. Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, council. So in the event of the disaster and the debris cleanup that follows, we also give monitoring services. We entered a joint effort with the county as done in the past. We sent out a request proposal, and out of the vendors, we have selected Tetra Tech to be our best suited provider. Tetra Tech has been a provider over the past several years. They've done a great job, and this is to extend the contract with them. One-year contract with the option to renew for two years.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Smith?
Does this fulfill requirements for FEMA program?
I hope that, I'm just afraid we don't have to worry about it, but it's good to have a ready-to-go. Thank you. Any motion?
Motion.
Motion to say? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Smith. On to item nine A, considering motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion and intent approving an EDC incentive to do good, federal credit union at 6895 IHJ East, Orange, Texas, 77630, for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed 150,000 for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Bradley.
Good afternoon. Interplant will send a new good credit union approach to EDC with plans to build a, construct a new credit, new new good credit union at Equal Point, which is right near the new Christus Hospital in Orange. So we're excited for a reconstruction that's coming in that area and really focus on what can be built there. So just a few details about the project. It's approximately a $3.3 million total capital investment. The EDC recently discussed and approved a subsidy approval, $150,000 incentive that can be used for infrastructure items such as plumbing, drainage, H-bag, paving, and items such as that.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Bradley? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Okay, and I say aye as well. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Item nine, reconsider motion to accept the resignation of Keith Longloyds from the Citizens Advisory Committee due to requesting to resign. Ms. Monson.
Yes, his appointment is not over until June of next year, which is, while we had to inquire the resignation, he said he just doesn't have time. He's pulled into many different directions. So I recommend it, except for the resignation.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. And we wish to thank Mr. Longloyds for his service to the community in many ways.
Many ways.
Many ways. Item nine, see, consider motion reappointing Ms. Deborah Vedder to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a new term expiring June 25th, 2028. Ms. Monson.
Yes, Deborah's been with us for as long as I've been here, but for many years before that. She's done a really good job. She does her homework, and she really puts a lot of thought and effort into the amount of money that each agency gets.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
A motion is passed. Motion passes. Congratulations to Ms. Vedder. She's also involved in several different organizations in the community. Okay, item nine B, consider motion reappointing Ms. Nadra Francis to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a new term expiring June 25th, 2028. Ms. Monson.
Yes, Ms. Nadra has also been very involved with the CAC since I've been on board. She's got great input, and I make a recommendation to reappoint her.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Congratulations to Ms. Francis. Item nine E, consider a motion to appoint Mr. Jim Jones to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a new term expiring June 25th, 2028. Ms. Monson.
So with Mr. Longloyds resigning, we also had three others whose appointment was up, and they chose not to get reappointed. So they left four vacancies, and we had three applications on file. So Mr. Jim Jones was the first one.
All right, do we have a motion? All right, do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Congratulations to Mr. Jones. Next, we have item nine F, consider a motion to appoint Mr. William Stark to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a new term expiring June 25th, 2028. Ms. Monson.
Mr. Stark also had an application on file. I talked to him. He expressed a lot of interest in being on this committee.
Okay, a motion. Can we have a motion? Second and a third. All right, Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Congratulations to Mr. Stark. Thank you, sir. On to item nine G, consider motion to appoint Ms. Vicki Woolridge to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a new term expiring June 25th, 2028. Ms. Monson.
Ms. Woolridge also had an application in, and when I talked to her, she was very excited about being on the committee also.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. I'm sitting here looking at this, and I'm like, this will be the last time I get, next time we reappoint, I won't be sitting here. We're getting to that point where like, now my, my starting seed is coming to an end. All right, thank you, Ms. Monson. All right, city manager report. Ms. Mike?
Well, first, we'll put you on these committees. Don't forget, Mayor, we have that amendment. I'm sorry.
Oh, we have, sorry, Ms. Anderson. The following item has been added to the June 25th, 2024 regular meeting of the Orange City Council agenda. We have item nine H, report on the US 90 lift station emergency repairs. Mr. Cruz and Mr. Jack.
So as he's making his way down here, Mayor of Council, y'all probably recall about 10 days ago, two Fridays ago, I sent y'all an email stating that this lift station on Highway 90 is having some problems. Fortunately, since then, it has gotten worse. And so add on, you know, last Friday, when we amended this, we were kind of talking about it, and it's like, well, how much? And it seemed like almost every day has gone by. And I'll admit, you know, Monday, I called the mayor, I think it was this weekend, I'm on the mayor, to look, the contractor, they mobilized on Monday. We talked about it a little bit, they're supportive, so just to cancel to let you know. I told Adam, I said, you know, starting Monday. You know, it's just starting. So that's kind of where we are. He's going to explain the situation and the path going forward.
Good evening, council. So, we have a lift station out on US 90, in the old park due place in the rubber track. That lift station serves about 550 acres of commercial and residential development. Included is Christus Hospital in Orange, the commercial properties around the interstate tents, State Island 62 interchange, a living room and a westward residential area served by this lift station. Lift station was built in 1962, was last repaired in 2020. This is a station overview as it exists right now. Photographing on the left is an aerial photograph of the station on the right. Right now, there's a 12-inch sewer that runs underneath of US 90. It is the depth of about a two-story building, 18 feet. It connects two manholes, then it goes into the lift station, which is shown on the right-hand side. So it's just pumped out of that well. You pump two pumps, and it is sent further downstream to be ultimately served by the wastewater drain there. A week ago, a week and a half ago, that 12-inch sewer collapsed. When it collapsed, it also took the manhole with it. And that systematically shut down the sewer serving that residential, those areas. That debris went into the bottom of the lift station, and as the pumps attempted to pump, while it was in the bottom of the station out, it damaged the two pumps that are at the lift station. As a result, we did some emergency response. We needed to put in a new driveway because the class completely disintegrated our existing access to the pump station. We didn't put in a temporary culvert to keep the roadside ditch from draining into the hole that was created by the class. And as you can see on the right-hand side, our staff had to get down in that nice deep sewer water, and it fixed the source made so that connect the temporary pump that gets sewer moving again. Thus, we're all down in that place now. The ultimate repair at this station time is, we need to dig down 16 feet, identify the problem, repair it, rebuild it. But in order to do that, we have to take the sewage, and we have to bypass the sewage from that pipe, which usually have the pipe that draws sewer. In order to do that, we may have to close the US 90 for a period of a couple of weeks. Obviously, when you get this deep, there's a lot of groundwater. So we have to pump that groundwater out in order to do the smart, we do not need to expend for the damage. We may have to replace the entire line of the US 90. We won't, contractor has been mobilized out there. We cleaned up the station, we've got sewer moving, we've got a temporary pump in place, we've ordered two pumps, and we've obtained the estimate to make the repairs. Right now, the contractor has mobilized on site on the edge of the road. Initially, texted, told us that they would offer us traffic control. They rescinded that offer. So we now need to add to our estimate the cost of reroute traffic and protect the work site. Bottom line is, right now, without traffic control, we're estimating the repairs to be $285,000 in two to three weeks to make those repairs, to complete the repairs. So that's the general overview. I want to give you the opportunity to see that and ask any questions.
Does the city council have any questions or comments? Mr. Jack?
I just want to say thank you. Great job to you and your staff. This is one of the things that when we were looking for you, we had to make sure we had people who knew what they were doing, engineers such as yourself. And I also wanted to make sure the public understands and council understands. When Mike called me on Saturday, it's never to override or to do something to keep it from you. But as you can see, when you have to make decisions like this, on the weekend, it's immediate. It's not about trying to do something underhanded because we can't afford to wait. And so, thank you to staff and everyone that's out there making this possible. I hate to hear that the text not rescinded their offer, especially with us working with them on other projects around this area for the last, you know, several years. Nonetheless, I know we'll find a way to make it happen. And so, let's continue to push, and we'll give them a thank you.
So that was just a report. There's no vote to be had on that. We will now move to city manager report. Mr. Cooper.
Mayor, council, just three quick things. I will be out of the office tomorrow. You may call me or text me. I'll get back to you. Mayor of Council, just three quick things. I will be out of the office tomorrow. If you need me, call me or text me. I'll get back as soon as I can. As we all know, July 4th is a city holiday, so city offices will be closed. And it's hot, so we implement no-tie July again. Doesn't mean like we're tied, but we're tied in July.
All right, City Council Report, starting with Mr. Chandler.
The report.
Thank you, Mr. Burge.
No vote.
You're on my agenda.
Ms. McKenna.
Thanks to everyone for being here. I'm always delighted to have a bunch of people here so that we can all know what's going on in our city and keep moving forward together. And I'll see you out of July 4th.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what you just said before we close the executive session. Thank you for those who are here. Thank you for those who are volunteering to be a part of our boards. Thank you to Ms. Patillo for letting us know. Honestly, Ms. Patillo, I've been involved in this for 10 years. It was my first time hearing what you stated. And so we never want anyone to feel discriminated against. We will definitely bring that and talk about it and see what we can do. But from the bottom of my heart, I want you to know, we will never do anything to hurt anyone. And so thank you for bringing that information to us, just I had never heard. And that is how the payment plans came out monthly. So when we find issues, we got to find a way to address them, okay? So thank you for that. With that being said, we will now adjourn to close the executive session. Deliberation of Legal Counsel pursuant to Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code. Deliberation of Legal Counsel, Section 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment of Kate Leverett with Germer PLLC as alternate slash assistant city prosecutor for the City of Moore's municipal court, and also 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding Auburn Square located at 2388 North Main Street in Bider, Texas. At this time, your non-appartments council or immediate staff will have to step outside, enjoy God's wonderful creation, and we'll let you know what you're doing. Deliberation of legal counsel, section 551.074. Personnel matters to deliberate the appointment of Kate Leverett with Berman P L L C as alternate slash assistant city prosecutor for the City of Orange Municipal Court. And also 551.071. Consultation with city attorney regarding Auburn Square located at 2388 North Main Street in Viner, Texas. At this time, your notificated council or immediate staff will ask to step outside, enjoy God's wonderful creation, and we'll let you know when you can get in.
We will now reconvene and open session. Take action necessary regarding item 1181. And so, how do we say that one?
Is it okay? Yes, because we're past the resolution.
There is a resolution due only to municipal prosecutor.
Okay, so consider a resolution appointing an entering into an agreement with alternate slash assistant municipal court prosecutor. Mr. Combs?
Mayor, Council, again, we're on record that Kate Leverett with Berman P L L C is appointed as the assistant municipal court prosecutor.
Okay, we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Can we say hi as well? Congratulations to Ms... I'm sorry. Then we have item 12B, take action necessary regarding item 1182.
Thank you. Mayor, Council has a resolution. City Council of the City of Orange, Texas approving a loan assumption and modification in a subordination agreement where the Auburn Square Apartments located in Viner, Texas, by sale from Auburn Square Limited to LCDC Holdings LLC. And as we've given you a report, but we also want to note that the resolution is effective upon passing by council, subject to the final closing, the sale of the Auburn Square Apartments, Auburn Square Limited to LCDC Holdings LLC. We did receive the first lien documents from First Financial Bank yesterday, and we will review those. And Vivian and her council are going to get us this subordination agreement. There's peace in between us and the senior lender, that is, with T D H C, also approving an assumption agreement. And all those will be required with the closing. So with that, we do recommend approval passage again, subject to this bid and lease act closing.
Okay, so we consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas approving the loan assumption and modification agreement and a subordination agreement for the Auburn Square Apartments located in Viner, Texas, by sale from Auburn Square V L T B, take LCDC Holdings LLC. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Give me my motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
And I say hi as well. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Goodson. You have a motion to adjourn. All in great to say hi.
Aye.
Give me your adjournment. Thank you.